Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castilla?
Here.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Ms. Ward is absent.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Great, thank you.
Okay, the first item on our agenda will be a city CFO finance update, and so we will now
Happy Tuesday to you all. What you have before you is a slide presentation that I'll go through first that was presented to the City Council last night. It's the FY '15 year-end report, and it's also a report on financial condition. What I will cover in the year-end finance report is where we are now in terms of our revenues and expenditures, where we are as of the FY '15 year-end in terms of our fund balance, impacts of the financial report for FY '15 on FY '16 projections, and then we'll do a summary and planning takeaways. And I don't mean that literally.
Too late.
Just to make sure everybody's clear. Right, just to see if you're paying attention.
We're listening.
Okay, so, the first slide is a graphic presentation of the results of operations. The blue line is the operating revenue.
Oh, yes, yes.
Your expenses are broken down by general government, school division, and debt service. And those numbers go back to 2006. What you will note is, beginning in 2010 up until 2014, the blue line was way above the expenditure line. That was partly planned, financial planning, where we built up the fund balance. It was also projections based on assessed value, which we have corrected because now the timing of the assessments is in tune with our fiscal year, which eliminates large variations. For those that like numbers instead of graphs, the results of operations are presented in the next slide. It's a budget to actual. What you'll note here, particularly with the local taxes, are that they were below budget. However, year over year, which you'll see in the more detailed monthly report that you also have in your packet, year over year, our growth was about 4.7 percent. On the expenditure side, if you include encumbrances, the variation for the general government is 1.9. The school division numbers are just based on the transfer, which means we transferred all the money that was budgeted to you. If you care to share what your results of operations were, I'll...
Oh, sure.
All ears.
I'll send you the annual score.
You'll send me the new... Thank you. All right. The next slide is the general fund balance as of June 30th, and it's a breakdown of how the fund balance is broken up. It's a total fund balance of $31 million. The most important one to me and to the general government is the unassigned, which is the red. That's 18.5 percent of your FY '15 expenditures or 17.6 of FY '16 budgeted expenditures.
Can I just put the policy as well?
Policy is, and there is a chart to show you that.
Is that coming later?
Yes, it is. The floor is 12 percent of expenditures, the ceiling is 17.
Thank you.
Also important in this graph is the $9.3 million, which is money that's committed for capital from the water proceeds. We also have $611,000 for building fee reserves, and that's to pay for future inspections of our new development projects. Now, meaning you have your encumbrances in the dark blue, that's the 1.1 million. We have restricted grants. We have $2.5 million that's committed to the FY '16 budget. We have 1.6 that's committed for capital, and that's from our capital reserves that were created from the sale of property. Next slide is a graph for the unassigned fund balance, and as was noted, we are above 17 percent.
All right, the next page was blank.
Oh, for you?
Yes.
Oh, that was special.
The next one's two.
Next two.
Next two.
For all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. The next one's our key revenue trends.
Oh, boy.
We have the edited version that you sent away today.
The redacted.
Hold on. I didn't send it out. Needs any audience.
Wow.
Okay, well, the detailed report, we can go over, and that'll shed some light on things, and I'll tell you what the trends, how they relate to what you're missing. Although you have, oh, you've got blank pages too.
Yeah.
All right, so you don't have a results of operation page?
Next one's slide eight.
And that's key, all right. And that's pretty relevant to this conversation. The results of operations was a line graph that just showed what has happened in terms of deficits and surpluses since FY 2006. And all it would show you is the big dip when we had the recession, large surpluses when we were recovering, and how it's flattened out in the last two years. That's in essence what it is. All right, key revenue trends. Your personal property tax, as you can see, going back to 2011, our actuals exceeded our budget for quite a number of years. We have worked on refining our projections so that we are at or close to what we budgeted. When you look at this graph and that blue line for FY '16, it means that we need to grow 6.6 percent to meet our revenue target for FY '16. Next slide, the sales tax revenue, and again, it's the same sort of trend. We've narrowed the gap, so our projections are a little more refined. We need 3.7 percent growth in FY '16 to meet our target. Meals tax, same thing, it's flattened out, we need 3.3 percent to meet our revenue target for FY '16. BPO, we're still playing catch-up with, so our, while we projected a growth for FY '16, it's quite a bit under what we actually did in '15. So we're looking at that as one of the items that will help in our future forecast, since we know it's still growing at a pretty good rate.
We also have a blank page.
Excuse me?
Blank page there, too.
Another blank one? We fooled you again?
We have no BPO.
No BPO.
Sorry, because we have no BPO. We have a hole.
You've got a hole.
A BPO.
Right. On the other hand, other taxes. Other taxes, we've exceeded our budget. We budgeted less in FY '16 because we noted a big drop-off in recordation taxes. However, in FY '15, when we got the final results in, we knew that we had the drop in recordation taxes, but we had an increase in our transient occupancy tax. So that sort of offset it, it exceeded it. We had good amusement taxes, vehicle rental taxes were up. So, again, we'll make that adjustment as we forecast FY '17. We'll take that into consideration. Now, do you have the next one?
Yes.
Okay, FY '15 actuals to the projections, all right. Now, what this is, again, I showed you the graphs first so you could see how we've closed the gap. This particular chart shows you what's needed to meet the revenue projections in FY '16 based on the FY '15 actuals. And you have the 6.6 for personal property, 3.7 for sales, 3.3 for meals. BPO only has to grow 0.1, so that's wonderful. And other taxes, we don't have to worry about. Next slide is expenditure trends, and this is for general government. It's blanked out.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, you have the next slide, which is another version of expenditure trends. The slide that I'm talking about now compares compensation to the other general government expenditures, and our personnel expenses are about 58 percent of our total expenditure. That's what that's, that slide shows. The next slide shows the breakdown of the salaries and benefits, and that goes back to 2009.
58 percent is a reflection just of the city?
Yes.
General government?
Yes. Yes, it does not include any food. The next slide is a comparison of general government expenditure trends to the school transfer. 2011, 1213, the general government had more expenditures than the school. 14, we were about even. 15 and 16, the school is growing a little faster. Okay, now you have a page that says key updates.
Yes.
Yay!
Page 16 does not reflect debt service.
Uh, yes, it does.
It does, and so the debt service shows up...
In the general government.
In the general government side, whether it's supporting a school facility or not.
Doesn't matter what that supports, right.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Richard?
Yes?
Either I missed it, or I see information about all the local taxes and this year and where they're headed, but I don't see any information about real property tax.
All right, real property taxes on slide four.
No, I see it's listed there, budget and actual for this year, but I don't see...
The chart or graph for it?
Where it's headed for next year, what further we need for next year.
Well, we didn't put it in there because right now, whatever we budget for our real property taxes theoretically is going to be what the actual is.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and again, the, in the prior years, if you go back to slide three, where we showed you the gap, that gap was due to the projection of real property assessment growth, as well as others, but that was the big driver because that's 60 percent of our budget. Okay, so, starting in 2014, that's pretty much eliminated. So whatever we budget is going to be the, is going to be the actual. If you're asking what the growth trend was for those years, we did not include it in our slide presentation. When we present the projections at the joint council-school board meeting, tentatively set for December, that information is hidden. Councilman did ask about that last night.
I mean, that's such an important part of our revenue, and I would like to know what we thought the growth was going to be in this, and what it actually was, what we projected forward.
And what we, what for budgeting purposes we projected as the growth.
Right.
Anticipating. Yeah, which sort of touches on, you know, are these projections have any qualitative aspects? Things that will change versus sort of a steady state in terms of assets producing?
All right, in the local taxes, yes, that there are some projections of what we anticipate the growth will be. For your, going forward in the future, you'll see that when we have the joint meeting. In terms of real property, whatever the assessor tells us the assessed value growth is going to be, that's what's going to be budgeted. It won't, it won't be like in prior years where we had that split year, so if we said we expected to grow 2 percent in '05, you had the big surplus, it's gone, it won't happen again.
No, no, I get that. I get that part, I'm just curious, that wasn't the case last year, what we thought was going to be this change, what we expect, even though we know it's just the assessor with what we expected to be.
What did the assessor say?
He hasn't said anything for '17 yet.
Right.
For '16.
For '16... Well, I don't have that with me, so... I mean, I can tell you what was budgeted for '16. I think that should be back in.
Something north of 46.1.
Hmm?
It'd be something north of 46.1.
Yes, yes. I don't have that with me now. But we can get it to you. Okay, key updates. One of the keys was the actuarial report. Our pension fund results are the actual value of assets. The funding ratio is up from 92 to 97 percent for basic, 87 to 93 for police. Our market value of assets is up from 102.5 to 108.9, from basic 98.1 to 108.5 for police. Now, all of that means that it impacts the contribution rate for FY '17. What we are anticipating is that the contribution rate will drop from 12.9 to 7.7 for basic, which will impact your school employees that are in the city pension. And for police, it'll drop from 29.5 to 23.4. Our projections are the pension cost reduction will be $600,000, not including school employees.
Does the values here reflect as of June 30th?
Yes.
And when you have that included, is it reflective of a multi-year type of percentage? Or is it, is it a snapshot, taking into account just that most recent year?
No, it's, we do use the multi-year. Okay, capital reserves from the sale of land, as I indicated before, it's $1.6 million. The planned uses are $1 million for Big Chimney and $643,000 for facilities, maintenance, which includes school facilities. That money is usually divided 50/50? Okay. Water sale proceeds, it's $9.3 million. Plan uses in the CIP are 3.4 for parking, and unallocated, it is close to 5.9. In terms of voluntary concessions for school capital costs, we've received the Northgate proffer. That was $680,000. We anticipate that we will get the Harris Teeter in the spring of FY '16, which will be $2 million, and we'll get another $1.5 from Tenner Hill in the summer of FY '17. And you all know what that is slated to do. Okay. All right, the outstanding tax-supported debt is broken down here. The general government is $14 million, schools a little over $40 million. We've broken down the school debt by facility, so you can see what that is. We know that involves two bond issues for Mount Daniel, one from 2006, and one from All right, in the future, what we're talking about and what we presented to council last night, there are items that we have to carry forward. There are encumbrances that will be carried forward and be reflected in the FY '16 budget amendment, and we are also having discussions about carryforwards for other items. They include, we had surplus building permit fees. There is going to be discussion as to whether that goes into that Development Services Fund paid for future inspections, or whether we allocate it someplace else. Set aside for FY '15 funds for transportation projects. We know we have WAMADA costs that may exceed the budget. We did not budget that much for WAMADA, and we ran a deficit in FY. There's also discussion about an environmental program coordinator, and then PSD, FCC TV issue. So those things will be considered at the, as we go forward with the budget amendment carryforwards. With that, I'll answer any questions on this document. Again, I apologize for the pages being missing, but I didn't make up.
Can you tell us about the WAMADA cost?
Okay, WAMADA is, is the cost, is our share of subsidy payments for Metro. There is a pool of money for all the participating jurisdictions that's generated from gas taxes. It's held by NVTA, and as WAMADA bills us, it's paid out of that fund. If there isn't sufficient money in the fund, general government has to off it up. Generally, historically, the first quarter of the new fiscal year is when there isn't enough money in the trust fund to pay the WAMADA subsidy payment. In the last two years, it's run more than just one. It's run more than what we budgeted. There were two. There were the post office property and the...
The building.
Building, yes.
That was just...
Yeah, there was money left over from that that we put into the reserve.
I guess in my mind, I sold them.
Yeah, we sold them, but we put the money in the capital reserve. We don't use the money. So this is city on that?
Yes, it was.
Not anymore.
Other questions? There's a chart that shows the number of housing units in different locations, in different types of units. Has the city updated the housing unit figure for single-family homes on that chart?
Can't answer that at this time.
The last figure that we saw on there was from 2013. It was not updated for two years.
Okay.
They are working on that for us right now. I've reached out.
And it would be very helpful if the data there included a recording, which I anticipate could be done because of building permits, where houses are expanded by more than 50 percent. But there's no, there's no, there's no new unit per se, but the size of the unit that's being demolished and replaced is being expanded by 50 percent or more. Good question. Ms. Carney?
This isn't about that presentation. I thank you, Margaret, and I look forward to receiving the full copy. At some point, I share your pain of this problem before myself. It's really, it's a memo from Bridget to the New York City Council today, September 21, where it looks like we had about $1.7 million of general government expenditures that we didn't expend, and, you know, good. But are any of those encumbered toward future projects? I know last year, at the end of the year, we had some money that wasn't expended, but we knew it was going to be spent in the next year on certain kinds of projects.
Yes. And if you go back to slide four, you'll see that the two numbers differ, and they differ by about $971,000. Those were the encumbrances. And if you look at that report, on the financials themselves, let's see. If you look at the encumbered column of the financial report, the expenditure page, that should be page two.
Page two.
You'll see an encumbered column, and that's the $971,000. That's what's going to be encumbered, and that's the difference between what you have on the slide presentation and what you have on that cover sheet of the memo. We included the encumbrances in the actual expenses slide presentation.
I see that. There are a couple there that are kind of big, and maybe you can just give me a sense of, and for Layman Wood, that is, or give back to me while the other. One is executive management, $361,000.
All right, those are IT projects that we were committed to and didn't get done in FY '15.
Perfect.
That's the major part of the carryforwards there.
Yes.
For public works, the 557 is road work.
Road work.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions on that? Just in terms of the pension fund, the contribution rate, $600 for general government, and all parts of the development.
I think we're about like $350,000 a year, that's currently, so it could not... About $100,000?
Yeah, about $100,000.
Any other questions or...
If you want to tackle it, I mean, this, this, the financial report is more detailed than the slide presentation, so if you do want to go through that, great, we can. Take a deep breath and let's dive.
For me, I'd rather have a chance to adjust it first, because you're just, I'm just for the first time. I reserve the right to return the questions.
Oh, that's wonderful.
I'd rather have a second to look at.
Anybody else want to...
No. Just one question.
Just one question on page 16 of the debt versus the cover page. And you said that debt service would be new, are clear, and maybe it's going to take a little more of a compare, but do these two actually cover the memo?
No, I'm looking now because I may have missed both.
I would think it does.
No, it does not.
So maybe we get the revised or go back. So that service is not included?
Not included.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Conover. That was lightning. And Carney, is there, okay, well, thank you very much.
Again, the joint meeting is coming up soon. Just load up the questions. I'll be happy to address them.
Thank you, sir. Just one last one, speaking in joint. Is there a team as yet that's been assembled to assess the financial for the GM MEH project?
You'll have to ask the city manager or your superintendent that.
We're working through that right now, Mr. Sharp. We do have the financial from Davenport and then we're working on RFP for that right now.
So there's a separate consulting group that's, that's being engaged for that?
Yeah. Do you want to clarify what you found out about that?
We, we've kind of laid it out this way. In terms of the financial consulting services that we would need for the campus project, there's sort of three pieces to it. One would be the city's financial advisor for the debt. One would be our fiscal impact analysis for future development, what kind of revenues and costs will it generate just for the private development itself. And then the third is commercial real estate advisory services. What's the value of the land? What should, what are ways we can, what should, what should we be getting either under a leasing agreement or a fee settlement? Those are sort of the three big areas of concern. The first two I listed best served by using your current financial advisor, Davenport, and our current fiscal advisor, Tischler Bice. And the third piece we still need to bring up.
Is there a description of what the deliverables might be and when they would be delivered?
We've asked all these, we've asked Davenport and Tischler Bice to put together a script of work and a schedule and a budget. And as part of the negotiations for the third piece, the commercial real estate advisory service, get that as part of their.
When may we see those descriptions? And, and the intended time of delivery?
Well, we need to have them onboard, obviously, in October to have them set up and ready to go for October 30th when the proposals come in. Working on it now and we'll do an initial staff review of it with our team and then we'll take it out to the city councils. Well, the first two, we've been talking with them, so they're basically, they know what they, they know that this is coming, so they're working on exactly, you know, setting, clearing their schedules so that they can help us in November and December. The real estate advisory services piece, we need to get that partner on board and then get that.
So the deliver, it sounds like things would be delivered in November and December. Is that right? There won't be any upfront?
Their work will be conducted, the evaluation in November and then working with their elected bodies in December. You are the deciders on shortlisting the proposals we receive. They would be part of the advice that you'll be getting for that. We would then keep them working for the cities to evaluate the phase two proposals and then to advisors.
Okay. I understand that we would need valuation expertise as, as the proposals have come in, but are you saying that we are not anticipating doing any upfront evaluation of either our, our existing capacity or what we anticipate to come in?
Yeah, we would, we'd expect them to do a baseline analysis so that they're not evaluating the proposals cold. We want them to thought about the problem before they get the proposals. And not necessarily come to any conclusions before they get the proposals, but having got their head wrapped around what it is we're trying to accomplish and what the parameters are for what they think the reality is that we're going to get from the proposals, then they will, you know, having acquainted themselves with the situation, they'll be better prepared to do it.
So that piece of it would be ready before the proposals come in?
Well, I think that work is not necess, we want them to go through that through an exercise before the proposals come in. Whether there's deliverable before the proposals come in or not, I think we can discuss with them whether we actually need to deliver. On one hand, it could be helpful to have the school board and the city council start to have some parameters as to what value might be for the real estate transaction. However, that value is wholly dependent upon the density. You really do need the proposals in hand before you really start to have a good grasp as to.
Well, it seems to me that the experts would be able to anticipate based on various levels of density, what the values should be.
They can do that.
And that's, that's what I think it would be helpful for us to be able to, to see that before the proposals come in.
They do a high, medium, low standard? On the baseline, it looks like.
The steering committee, there's a lot of context on this. The steering committee actually was, talked a lot about should we do a value study before we embark on the RFP. The decision was not. That would be, on one hand, it could be a useful academic exercise, but on the other hand, it could get us anchored on values that are in fact not based on what the market can actually deliver. Size and best use. And so the decision was not to do that. And now we're, I think the exercise to lay out some parameters really is, would be to just get the team sort of moving together and understanding, preparing to evaluate. And rather than getting our, you know, getting a whole lot of anticipation as to, you know, what the, you know, one set of experts think might happen. We just think that, I think the steering committee concluded that RFP process is the best way to determine better, rather than an academic exercise.
I'm fine with the decision that was made earlier when there was perceived to be a substantial time lapse between when this, when this anticipated value reckoning would be done and when the proposals would actually come in. But now we're at a point where there's a very close proximity here of the, when that reckoning is done and when they come in. But I think it's, I think it's important that we have that so that we, we have some idea of whether, whether what's being proposed is, is at least what our experts tell us is, is on the mark or pretty far off the mark.
Other thoughts about that?
I think on the one hand, we don't want an anchor, or anchor say. I think our thinking evolved a lot over the last six to eight months. But, so I guess it should be a functional question of what preparation. It doesn't mean that it's something of value, but what analytical tool will we have to ?
Well, so I'm listening to Aaron, and empathetic with what he wants to know, but I wondered if there's not a different way to go about that. Rather than having them kind of create some options, why it's worth academically before they come in. I guess what I'm relying on those people to do is look at things that we get and base it on their experience, see whether those match what they would expect in markets. Right? So there's a different approach to, I think, achieving. But if any projects that I had discussed in my kitchen, that would be the approach they would take, is they would get something in and they would have someone who was their expert to say, well, are these numbers valid in fear and right or are they not? As opposed to predicting upfront what they might get. Does that make sense to you?
And that's, I think, a pretty good description of the way that we had thought was the best way to tackle the problem. To have experts at our side to evaluate the value propositions that are brought to us in the proposals. And I think that advice can also be that if the development was changed X or Y way, you could possibly have a different value, a better value. That also would be helpful advice. I think other aspects of the advice would be asking the lease structure versus the fee settlement. Best way to structure the lease and watch out for an lease. All those things would be in the scope of work with it.
Thank you, Mr. Conover.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
See you next time.
A closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where our section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting, that was, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law now therefore be resolved, that the Falls Church School, Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Ankuma. Thank you, Ms. Carney.
Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now we will rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands. One nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we move to adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Lawrence, Ms. Carney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, the agenda is adopted. Now we come to section five, public comments and requests. If you have a desire to comment, you have three minutes under bylaw 2.30. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. I see I have two comment forms here, the first being that of Allison Kuchma. Welcome, Ms. Kuchma.
Allison Kuchma, I came before you on September 8th and.
Is your microphone on?
Uh, should be green. Now it's green. I came before you on September 8th and really pleaded with you to, to share with the community how much we have spent at Mount Daniel to date so far and try to have some transparency on the process. On September 9th, I went to the Thomas Jefferson, the Ice Cream Social, the PTA meeting and Dr. Jones spoke. And at that time, she said, she had an opportunity to talk to a roomful of parents. She told that, said that it cost us nothing. And, and so that was really alarming to me because I know that we have spent money to date. So I did a Freedom of Information Act request for the information that I hope that you guys have on how much money we've spent to date and received that on the evening of the 18th. And interestingly, on the, on the afternoon of the 19th, we get a communications from the school district telling us how much money we've spent. And it's interesting because I'm really uncomfortable with this communication based on the information that I have. And I just wonder if you've looked at this and you've compared it with the information you have or whether you approve this stuff. You know, we talk about how in this statement that, that you need to spend money to prepare for the 2232. That's actually a true statement. Then they go on to talking to, it costs a lot of money and this needs to happen. And then it's divulged that we've spent 1.2 million. And it kind of leaves the public to believe that the 1.2 million was spent to prepare construction schematics and designs for the 2232. But that, that amount of money is way over what we would need to do to prepare for a 2232. And if you look at the information that I received in my Freedom of Information Act request, to be ready for the 2232, you'd have to spend about 100 and, looks like 156,000 dollars. The additional 900,000 dollars is on blueprints for renovation of building we may never build. And that's almost a million dollars and that's 20 teachers. Someone is just giving you some really bad advice and I'm really troubled by it and continue to be troubled because the information that comes out just, you know, it's kind of insulting because we're an intelligent community. And so you allow this kind of thing that is misleading at best. This information is misleading at best. And I just want to know if you guys are talking about a plan B and who is going to pay for this? This project does not move forward. Who's going to eat the million dollars in blueprints? Who's going to pay for this? Is Grundley going to say that we're going to pay for it? Is Arcadis going to pay for it because they're our construction manager and giving us this great advice? I mean, these are questions that the community wants to know.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. All right. Next up, we have a comment form from Mr. David Kuchma. Welcome, Mr. Kuchma.
Hi, thank you, Dave Kuchma. A13 Fulton Avenue. I, in, in terms of the, the context of really what my wife just spoke to, I just wanted to express my concern and a little disappointment with when the Mount Daniel referendum was sold to the community, that there was, I guess there was a statement that said that the community was, that the adjacent communities were on board with the project. And now we're in this situation that we're in because we're finding out that that really wasn't the case. And I, you know, it kind of speaks to, you know, the, you know, the communications with integrity and, and just, just a little disappointing that, you know, in light of the, you know, the NIMBY attitudes that we have, that this project was that perfect storm, if you will, for that. So that was just, you know, one thing that I wanted to say. I was curious and, and maybe this could come out in the super natus rapport, if one of you know that the, I believe it's the weld and model that we use, that we pay for that study to project population. And I was curious what that, what that cost is. So if, if that could be put out there to the community. Just another thing is, is, is Mount Daniel kind of turns along, we noticed that there was also a change order for an emergency generator that was needed or for some reason there was a generator that staff requested. So maybe we could be enlightened as to what that was for and potentially why it wasn't included in the cost of the big renovation that we're doing. And just an update on any, on any other work that may be up and coming that will be in addition to the 1.3 million that we know that we've spent. And that might actually include what we've paid Arcadis so far because that, that's out there. And, and then, let's see, we got the generator. And as to whether or not any subcontractors had been released on the project, I know that we were in the rush to go. We had signed the design build contract. We have the plans. Did we let foundations steal? So are there bills that are coming in from subcontractors and then also potentially delay claims? Do we anticipate that we would be in a position to where we would have now delay cost on top of that to contend with? So if you could keep us posted with that, we would appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. Ms. Kimmel, do we have any other comments?
We do, sir. One letter to the school board from Stephanie Oppenheimer. Ms. Oppenheimer writes to the school board with concerns about school administrators receiving Apple Watches to wear.
Thank you, Ms. Kimmel. Okay, now we come to item six on the agenda, the consent agenda. I'd seek unanimous consent to adopt the consent agenda. Okay, without objection, so ordered. Now we come to item 7.01. Business action and information, and this concerns a complaint from the public. Is Mr. Horn here? Yes, Mr. Horn. Mr. Horn, the agenda item there references policy 5.14. Is that? Is that the correct reference? Okay.
It's 5.4.
It's item 7.01.
No, the correct reference would be 5.4, not 5.14.
Okay, thank you. By way of background, on about September 4th, the school board received a complaint regarding communications from Dr. Jones to the special ed advisory committee. One was a communication distributing a survey to the members and the other was a message about scheduling of the committee's first meeting. And the complaint alleged that Dr. Jones's actions have harassed or intimidated the special ed advisory committee and that Dr. Jones should have not communicated directly to members of the speak directly, but should have done so through the chair. We have conducted an investigation of these allegations. We have consulted with the Virginia Department of Education about the pertinent regulations that were alleged to have been violated, and we have reviewed the applicable regulations. And we find that based on the communications themselves as well as the regulations, that there has been no violation. With that, I will throw this out to the members of the board if they have any other thoughts or comments that they would like to express about this complaint.
I'll just make a quick comment. I mean, the basic idea was that the superintendent didn't have the right to communicate directly with members of a school advisory committee. The special ed advisory committee, I'm the liaison to it, is, it has some special rules by the state, one of which says that they, the committee specifically reports through the superintendent to the school board. So the idea that...
Excuse me, Mr. Lawrence, could you just hold on for a second? There's some feedback or distortion in the mic. Could we do something about that because it's very distracting?
Test, test.
Is it okay now?
Hello? I think that's better. But it seems to go with, well, no, there it is again. And earn your paycheck tonight. Is that, that's much better, much better. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Lawrence, but I couldn't, it's very hard to pay attention with that noise. So please, please proceed.
Sorry, I would just say that a major part of the complaint was the fact that, the allegation was that the superintendent should not be allowed to communicate directly with members of an advisory committee, only the chair. For special ed, it's set up, well, first of all, I think that assertion is a bit absurd for a school superintendent. But the special ed advisory committee is set up differently in that the state specifically says it reports through the superintendent to the school board. So the idea that the committee, and it's the committee, not the chair, could report through the superintendent without the superintendent being able to communicate with each of them directly just flies in the face of common sense. So I think, you know, what we did here was good due diligence and came up with not only the correct and legal solution, but also the common sense one. Thank you.
Other thoughts or comments? Mr. Sharp?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I had a chance to review some of the background correspondence between the chair and the state official. And I would just say it read very much like I recall reading a law professor's analysis of some fact pattern and whether it fits within a particular legal requirement. Just taking the analysis from multiple angles and trying to determine, was there any basis for finding a violation? And indeed, as the correspondence went back and forth, there simply were, was not a finding that a violation occurred. Now, I will say, in instances where the statute and the regulation are really silent, I think as Mr. Lawrence was indicating, it's silent on some of the specifics here. I think there is inherent operational authority that a school board has for having the ability to say what its advisory committees should be doing and to provide for their efficient and smooth operation. And so while those things are not entirely explicit in the statute or the regulation, I think they are inherent in what the relationship is between the schools and its advisory groups. And so I especially want to thank the chair for being so thorough and careful here. And I think, I think what the result here is the appropriate result. Thank you.
Other comments? Ms. Carney?
There, now it's green. One of my observations having observed both this complaint and the process we've been through to try to resolve it is even though we just updated our policy 5.12, which has to do with these advisory groups and boards, I think it may behoove us to go back and look again to be quite specific, so there's no question, about the role of these advisory boards and commissions as far as our policy is concerned, the role of the leadership of these groups. Because I kind of feel like the unsaid thing in this complaint was that there was a belief that this group was independent of the school board and that the chairman of it had broad powers, which frankly, the mayor of this city don't have. You know, right? I mean, you don't have the powers that were alluded to. I didn't as chair, the mayor of the city doesn't have those powers. And so what that tells me is we've not been clear enough in our policy. And I would encourage us to go back and be very explicit so we don't have these bits of confusion in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Other comments? Right, I would just close by saying this complaint raises multiple issues. And I think Ms. Carney touches on some of the considerations that go to governance, the role of boards, the role of advisory boards, the roles of chairs of bodies. I would like to say that I have magic powers as chair of this body, and in fact, I don't. As Ms. Carney has noted from time to time, when she was chair, she has one vote of seven. I have one vote of seven. I am not the boss of anybody. Individuals do not act on their own. We act as a body. When I'm out there on the street as chair of the school board, in my opinion, plus 350 will get you a tall skim latte. We have to vote, we have to choose as a body. And that's, the same goes for advisory committees. While Ms. Carney would have us revisit our policies, and we will, I think these were drafted with an eye to people of good faith acting in cooperation with each other. And you can't legislate against that. I think the notion that a chair could prohibit the superintendent from communicating with anybody is frankly, demonstrates a lack of transparency that I think is troubling. I hope that we realize that we are a community and that communication should be encouraged. Of course, it should be civil. And I think in this case, all of the communications at issue were professional and civil. And I would ask members of the community going forward to be cognizant of the roles of the various bodies, to realize that cooperation and comedy is what generates results, not confrontation, acrimony, and, you know, results-oriented assertions of authority that are frankly not founded in statute, regulation, or anything else. I will also note that we did invite the complainant to address us and the complainant declined. We clarified with the complainant that we did not see any material issues of fact. In other words, the issues raised in this complaint, and I'm sorry if I sound like a boring lawyer, but there were no issues of fact. The issue was, could the superintendent make these communications or not? There was no dispute over what was said. That was all very clear in the record. And so we decided on that basis. Unless there are any other comments, I will seek a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board authorize the chair to issue a letter of finding as discussed by the board.
Let's go, I have a second. All right, Ms. Kimmel, will you call the rule?
Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Now we come to item 7.02, approval of student trips. There has been some, I know we've discussed this before in our last meeting about plans, Dr. Jones. So this is the next step in that, and so I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, as you know, when we changed Mr. Horn's role as chief officer for legal and also student activities, one aspect that we needed to get much better at was making sure that overnight trips are all coming to the school board. We need to know where our students are traveling and what's happening in the school division. So these are three trips for your approval. Model Nation is a trip where they actually travel down to William and Mary High School for a conference, and it again is an overnight conference. The band trip that's in here is, the band generally goes somewhere every year. This is back to Atlanta. And last year, I think they traveled in the fall because I heard somebody say today, they were bummed they're going in the spring. I guess it falls in a really challenging time, but the kids love it. And the trip, Ms. Carney did ask a good question because there is a statement in here where it talks about students are aware that these trips are not mandatory nor is there any aspect of a grade involved, and that if they cannot afford the trip, they do not have to go. But what I wanted to point out in here is that there are ample opportunities. The trip is $650 and as it has been in the past, and this is actually in the second paragraph, students will be provided numerous opportunities to raise funds for this trip, which includes the music days, and that's when they go out and work for the community all over the place. So if a student does not feel that they can afford the trip, they are given the opportunity to raise the funds. And I did point out and share with Ms. Carney, last year, we did have at least two grants that were put forward to the foundation to fund two students on this trip. And the foundation, after careful review, did deny that grant because the students had chosen not to take any opportunities to earn money, and they just didn't feel like that was the right thing to do. And then the last, but least trip here is soccer. And I'm trying to remember where they're going, Mr. Horn.
I don't remember.
Thank you. So we are, we would appreciate your approval for these overnight trips for our kiddos.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Lawrence?
Just a couple of questions. These go into 2016 and they're only high school. And I know at least, being a middle school parent, I know of, you know, some that my son will be doing. Others can come to us in the future. It just happens that these are all high school this time.
Yes, and feel free to, Mr. Horn, if you want to. But we are trying to make sure any, any trip that is overnight, that is school-sponsored and associated, comes to the school board.
Yeah, because if I have to come home tonight and say the TSA trip is not happening, I'm not going to be welcome to come home tonight, so.
That's correct. We have, beginning last year, we made sure that those staff members who planned to take overnight trips knew that they would need to come before the board. We've developed a short list of criteria that they would submit to us for vetting. One of them is their plan for, including students who otherwise cannot afford it. It is our desire not to bring you a trip that doesn't have an adequate plan for providing for scholarships or fundraising or some other methods to ensure that if we sponsor a trip, that we are saying that any student who is otherwise qualified to go will be able to go without regard to their means to pay for it. So these three trips meet that. These three trips in terms of timing, the band trip is a very large trip with many kids, so it needs to be approved so they can make some actual headway. Model United Nations is occurring in November, so there's a timeframe, a time as of the essence there. And the boys' soccer trip is on the agenda for tonight because we received the invitation for that exclusive tournament just this week. And you don't have much of a window to accept that invitation as their tournament will fill up. So that explains why these three are here tonight, but we anticipate bringing them as they come to us.
Any other questions for Mr. Horn while he's on the spot? Mr. Lawrence?
Not a question, but just pointing out, since I'm the liaison to the Falls Church Education Foundation, back in February, they had an issue as to whether or not they were going to fund student trips in any capacity out of unrestricted funds. And they very specifically decided not to. So it's not just the one that Tony was talking about. They've made a policy decision.
Okay, Mr. Horn, just one question for clarification. Games or tournaments that sports teams engage in regularly do not go through this process, correct?
Mandatory Virginia High School League advancement travel will not come through this body each time because we wouldn't have time between knowing of the trip and following. The reason this is here is because it's an optional tournament. We're not required to participate in the soccer tournament, and it will require the loss of instructional time of one day. So it's a voluntary thing. It's something our soccer team would like to do, but it's no different than Model United Nations, kids missing a day or band kids missing two. In our opinion, it would require your endorsement, whereas the Virginia High School League postseason schedule is implicitly endorsed by your signature on the membership application.
Just wanted to make that clear for the community. One other question, just so that you can clarify. I received a question, why was the trip to Chile canceled this year? That's not my understanding, so maybe you could just clarify for the community.
Yeah, our understanding in the spring of last year was that our staff at the high school needed a respite from the annual Chile exchange, and that was one of the purposes of Mr. Byrd's traveling with that group last year, was to work with the school administration there on a revised schedule. So it wasn't canceled because of a review in policy or change in program. It was postponed as we reviewed the relationship with the sister school.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that as well. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Horn before we release him? Okay. All right then. Would I have a motion, please?
I can take it. I move that the board approve the mentioned overnight field trips in accordance with probably 6.38 student trips.
Thank you, Ms. Carney, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And any abstentions? All right, thank you. The motion passes. Now we are at 7.03, approval of the work plan. Dr. Jones, you've been hard at work. How's it going?
I'm ready to get this up on the wall so I can start marking something off. We did make all of the changes based off of the notes. There were quite a few. Probably a couple of things I will, I do want to point out would be on page two on 21st Century Teaching and Learning. Mr. Sharp had given us a great priority to provide staff and community data on our students' academic performance. It did say only five years, but I did change that to three to five, so I just want to be clear about that because we are very careful to make sure, and we tell our administrators and our teachers understand, we only compare apples to apples. And we have some assessments that we don't have five years of data without comparing to a totally different assessment, totally different standards in Virginia. So I just, I wanted to note that that...
So I just, I wanted to note that that was in there. And I think that was the only change that I actually made that, as I was writing it, I thought I needed to make that clear. So if you do have any questions, you know, let me know, and again, we will be hard at work on this.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sharp.
First of all, I want to thank Dr. Jones for going through this very carefully, and appreciate the way that the request for these data points has been pulled into a realistic set of requests here. I think it's done very well. Thank you. I think there was a bit of misunderstanding in regard to the, I believe it's in 1.3. It's the, it's the point, where are we here? It's the point having to do with graduation. Okay, it's at the bottom of page three. And I'll just ask, is it intended here that the, any student who is at risk of not graduating, that that student may be in any grade? And I understand that as they get closer, that that would be the idea, is that, yes, certainly, there would be a strong focus on students who are in the senior, at the senior class. But is there also an intent here to identify students in earlier grades who may be at risk of not graduating on time?
Right, absolutely.
Is that true?
Yeah, absolutely. And we assess every freshman coming into the high school. Math and reading, we do benchmark screening. Any student who needs to be in intervention, not because they're in a subgroup that is, whether it's special education or ESOL, but if they just are a student who doesn't have the skill set, we work individually. And the freshmen through the senior year, we're making sure, we do that every single year for students, and we provide whatever resource or tool an individual needs to find success in our high school. And I do think that's why, you know, like this year, we had 100% of our students graduate, tremendous amount of work to graduate every single student. And I did add in here, Mr. Sharp, I'm glad you pointed this one out, because I knew there was something else. Will you see where it says, with the exception of transition students?
Right.
And I did want to put that in there. The school board talked about that, and sometimes we will have an on-time graduation rate that shows 98 or 99, but those transition students, their on-time really is 21 or 22, because they have special needs and need to stay with us, but they do ding you for that in your graduation on-time rate. So I just wanted to put that in there, that we expect those students to stay with us, and that's what they should be doing, so.
Yeah, I'll just mention, there is some discussion going on at the federal level currently of how these standards will be interpreted there going forward, that is, the on-time graduation. And of course, if there are indeed requirements that come out of that, we will have to observe them, but let me just suggest that there might be a slight change in phrasing here to clarify the intent of this item. And I think it may say, identify any student who is at risk of not graduating on time, and per, and with the exception of transition students, close per, so that every student who enters GM, and especially students who enter the senior year, graduate on time, and student success is bolstered. If that's, you know, putting in a bit of an extra clause there, make sure we're covering other students who are at GM, just earlier than the senior level.
Okay, I can make that adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Last comment I would have, has to do with the last page, well, the last narrative page, page seven. We discussed at some length the idea of having a zero-based budget process. And I'll just say, I think there, again, is some semantic and difficulties here. Our mandates that are ones that come largely to us from the state with SOLs, with pensions, with the contracts that we have with our staff, the procedure that we have to have for reduction in force, if that ever becomes a necessity. There are quite a few things that really constrain us from going to a really, what some people would term a zero-based budgeting system. And so I think it would be a misnomer for us to throw that term in there. I do think it is a desire by the board, again, I'll just, you know, offer my opinion on this, and I think by the public, that we do look at our budget in a very careful way, that we take a look at particularly large expenditures and break them out into components, so that we understand what each of the components involves, and have a clear justification of what each of the components will deliver for us. And to that extent, I think getting to that kind of detail is what I think the board and the public is really getting after, and not necessarily the precise term, zero-based budgeting process. So if we might, I don't have phrasing here tonight to get at that, and I know we didn't really discuss phrasing of it last time. If we can think about this and get to maybe a better description of it, at the point where we're in our budget process, including budget process that we may enter pretty soon here with the city council and with some of our stakeholders, as long as we approach it in that careful manner, I'm happy to leave these statements as they are for now, but I would like us to revisit our budget approach as we get into the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any other comments? All right. Do I have a motion to approve these, the work plan as amended ever so slightly?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve the FY '16, FY '18 work plan as amended ever so slightly.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 7.04, approval of the GM MEH Proposal Review Team. Dr. Jones.
As you know, this is part of our planning process when the RFP comes in, that we have talked about with the city council and school board, that there needs to be a review team that is very small, and that's at the recommendation of our attorney, that actually, as we were talking about earlier tonight, is gathering all of that information for the school board from the advisors, and then bringing that to the school board and city council. And along kind of that thought, I will just point out that the school board calendar dates are down on the bottom under Materials for Board Review. Mr. Shields and I worked again last week to continue to refine those, because they have to work for school board and have to work for city council, they're tough. But the goal is for us to have this very small review team, working with our attorney, and then, of course, all of those advisors, bringing that information to you. Our review team, what I'm recommending, of course, we had talked about the superintendent and myself, and then Ty Bird, Tyrone Bird, the high school principal. And again, this is after a lot of discussion and kind of just thinking about who would be the best person to be able to advise us in the way that we need, and bring good information to the school board. And of course, the city, Mr. Shields is looking at, he, of course, would be on the review team, as well, at least two of his team, one from economic development and one from planning. So we're thinking it would be right around a team of five. And then, of course, Tom Horn and Carol McCosky are there, is our advisors, is the attorney. So that would complete the team. Mr. Bird was absolutely thrilled and excited, just with the idea of recommending him to the school board. Some of you may or may not be aware, but he does have, I think he brings also a unique perspective, because he was at Washington Lee when they were going through all of their construction. So he has dealt with lots of migration of kiddos when the gym was a couple blocks away from the high school, and it's pouring rain, and you have kids going back and forth, and it sounded like it was a really difficult, actually, for the kids there. So he brings a great perspective, having lived through construction as a principal, so I think he would be excellent for us, even evaluate some of those components to give us his feedback.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any questions for Dr. Jones? Mr. Sharp.
Well, the full process here is rather unclear for me, and I think I began to discuss at least one aspect of it when we met in work session earlier tonight, and that is, I think there are some processes that need to occur, at least in my mind, they should occur, that parallel, and in some cases precede, this work by a team that would actually evaluate the proposals that come in. The one that I discussed in work session had to do with financing, and I think that will be an extremely important part of what we're trying to get through here. And the earlier that we begin to understand what the parameters are there, the better. As Mr. Shields gave a brief description of them, we would need to hear what are the different levels of revenue, if you will, that we might expect from different levels of density of the commercial project? What are the different kinds of financing that we could apply, whether they would be outright purchase or lease, combination of lease and purchase? And then, you know, what are the financial instruments that accompany those, including different kinds of bonds? Could be a bank loan, could be some other kind of financing arrangement. And the sooner we begin to grapple with those and understand the values involved, the land values, the commercial values, and also have a chance for the community to communicate to us what their values are, what density they would tolerate at that location. I think the better we will be prepared to make a wise choice as to what really will fly, and what will be successful on that parcel, for both school purposes and commercial purposes. And if we wait until after the proposals come in, and after the small team of staff goes through the process and then gives us their report, I think that's too late. And so I'll just say, you know, if that's the process that's anticipated here, I'm going to vote no. But I hope that we will be looking at some additional ways to get at this besides this small team that's going to make a decision for us at the point, only at the point where the proposals have come in, and they've had a chance to go over them with, you know, only the experts that they pick and consult. I think that's not the process that I would favor and vote for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Other comments or questions? Mr. Ankuma.
Dr. Jones, could you refresh our memory again, and you may have said it again, but if you could just go over it one more time. This approval, the review team, that still involves other members of the joint committee, doesn't it?
The way that the actual review team, and again, this is being what was recommended by Troutman Sanders, who's guiding us through this process, is that the review team made up of staff from city and school needs to be very small. Part of that is the confidentiality of the nature in looking at the proposals. The Troutman Sanders would guide us through that process as staff, and what we are doing is basically collating all of this information that we will have from Davenport Financial, from, it could be from Arcadis on the high school, looking at all of those pieces, collating those, and putting them in some sort of structure, again, working with our experts, to bring to city council and school board, so that you can see, here are X amount of proposals. This is the, some strengths and weaknesses based on the analysis that these experts have done, and it is ultimately, it's the school board and city council that actually are the decision-makers. It's not, this review team is just doing the work, because you have real jobs, and we know there's a tremendous amount of work that has to take place during the day, just getting through this process, working with our experts.
I think you answered my question with those two words, decision-makers. They wouldn't be making the decisions. Decision would still be made by the governing body.
Absolutely.
There's a legal term for it.
They make recommendations.
They make recommendations.
Yeah, and that's why I try to say collating, we are really collating, prioritizing as far as perhaps what an expert might say, this financial aspect is better in this proposal. They might say it's better in a different proposal, but maybe the high school is better in proposal A instead of proposal C. So it's bringing all of that information to both governing bodies to make the decision. You're welcome.
Ms. Carney.
I would say that we've had lots and lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of discussion over quite some time about this particular step in the process with regard to the school board. We've had a community-wide visioning session for the school. We're having another one in this process with staff, we're having another one in this process with the community, before this group would ever get together to evaluate proposals. This is an evaluative body and a recommending body, not a decision-making body. And the school board and city council, at the end of this work, would be not selecting a partner, but a short list of partners that we would then give a more detailed RFP to bring us back more information. So I just want the community to be clear on kind of where we are in the process and what we'll be doing. I don't know what city council has in mind, if anything, to do in terms of general community input on the commercial development part of this process. Maybe, Dr. Jones, you can find out and send that back to members of the board. I don't know what's happening on that side, to collect community input on that particular part. I know there was a question about design guidelines, or not if they're doing community sessions, or anything like that, but that would be helpful to know. But that's kind of the process that we find ourselves in at this particular moment. I would also like to ask the superintendent to come back as soon as she's aware of it, with the list of experts that will be guiding and assisting. I assume that it will be our folks that usually do that, but I want to understand kind of who are the financial advisors, and who might be engineering advisors, or traffic advisors, or construction advisors, or, you know, whoever else the other ones are. I'd like that to be brought back, both for us and for the community, so that we understand, you know, kind of who those people are.
Hey, Ms. Carney. Other questions or comments? Dr. Jones, so the entire proposal review team, do you have any idea of how big that's going to be?
Right. Because it's been recommended to be small, and Mr. Shields is looking at himself and two other staff right now, but I will be bringing you his list to the school board as well, and he will do the same for us, to the city council.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So at this stage, are we, at the point where we were requesting additional information prior to this approval, or do we have to do this right now?
Well, let me ask the question this way. I mean, this, first of all, I think, as was observed, that we're dealing with a funnel here, and we're starting with a very wide funnel, and the funnel is narrowing, and this is part of the winnowing process. Now, having said that, there are going to be various, there's like a three-legged stool. You've got your development portion, you've got your financing portion, and you've got your educational building portion. We're basically talking about your participation primarily focused on what aspect of this project.
For the review team?
Yeah.
One of the reasons it's timely is that the proposals will come in on October 30th, and so we, and you only meet so often, and so we need to be sure we know who is that review team, because then Troutman Sanders will set the schedule with all of those development folks, and it moves pretty fast, in the sense that we have Thanksgiving and winter break that we're dealing with, when we're trying to get to that next step. And so this review team will be ready to go. And so this review team will be ready to go when Troutman Sanders and all of our specialists are ready. And so, you know, depends if he's able to block off the first two weeks of November, then we may need to be there and prepared to go. And again, it depends on how quickly our experts are working on the project for us. You know, you may have your financial people take three weeks, you may have Arcadis who's able to do their portion of analysis in two weeks or three and a half weeks, and so that we won't know until we know what we get.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lawrence.
So, I mean, to sort of summarize, we're not approving a process here. We're appointing two people into a process that we approved as a body several months ago, and we really need to do it now because we don't meet again until October 13th.
Right.
Which is 17 days before the RFPs come in.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sharp.
I disagree with that interpretation of the motion, and I will say again that there are aspects here, financing being one of them, but I think there are several others that we should be preparing to evaluate proposals, and I think there's been too much of a funneling into a very small group of staff, of experts, and not enough of preparation with the community. And I will just say that there are ways that we should be organizing to try to come up with additional points of evaluation for the small review team to use. I'm not arguing that there shouldn't be a small review team to actually review the proposals that come in, but I am saying that we're greatly truncating the process that should occur here by not having some additional work done to provide for coming up with some ways that the small review team will be able to reference what the community has said about what it wants in this project.
Well, I think, Mr. Sharp, let's tease that out a little bit. The issue at one level is this, we are making a request for proposals. At this stage, as has been observed, it's part of a two-stage process where you start conceptually, you down-select to a group, and then you proceed with more detailed designs. I think the first step of this, of the small group should be to qualify, if you will, the submissions. In other words, who, if somebody comes up with a design for a school that is, that does not meet the criteria, then they're down, they're not down-selected, they're eliminated. So I think, you know, with respect to this filtering process, I agree that that level of scrutiny has its place, bless you. But I think what we're really looking at is, again, not who is coming up with something that, it's, there, it's more than a notional concept that will be presented, but it's going to be, you know, it's which skeleton can we put flesh on the bones best? And so from that standpoint, I think there is, to say we're looking for something that's in the ballpark is probably oversimplifying it, but we are looking for something that has the potential to be realized to the point where we say, let's proceed with these teams. But I think there is, you know, there's a question of how much time and resource can you spend analyzing multiple proposals at that level? And in addition, I think there is the issue that we're constantly struggling with of not anchoring ourselves in certain concepts or not preordaining or foreclosing opportunities. And so I think, from that standpoint, I think you're right, and the question is the timing, and the question is, when is that appropriate? And I think, as we've discussed here at this point, what we're looking to do is to select a promising, not unwieldy, but not too small, group that will be subject then to the additional design scrutiny. And so my conception of this first stage really is vetting to, you know, sort out the ones that are non-compliant and identify the ones who are strongest. And I think that the general experience I have had with this process in other contexts is that that works pretty well. There are many moving parts here, you know, it's got a level of complexity far greater than most of the things that we've seen to date. But I would say, by the same token, because these things are going to be so intricate in their inner workings, the three components, we will need to engage in this in some depth at some time, but if you want to get to the detailed process, you have to treat the conceptual process in a manner that lets us have the process keep moving. And I fear that putting too much resource into treating these conceptual proposals as detailed ones could come at the ultimate detriment of the end product that we seek. Ms. Carney.
I do think there's something that could be clarified that people maybe are wondering about, and that is, so we've put this document on the street, we've had a lot of interest in it, we expect at the end of October, we're going to get some number of responses back. We're going to have a team that will begin to sift and sort, as you described, Mr. Castillo, those into people where there's a possibility and people where it's not a possibility. But between October 31st, and we have a date which is December 31st, is that right? When the detailed proposal goes out, I think it would be helpful, we don't have to do it this minute, but it would be very helpful for all of us to understand how we get from the conceptual RFP and responses to the detailed proposal, because that's an important step. I mean, that's why we're having a staff kind of visioning session, that's where we're having another community visioning session, that's where our financial advisors will help us, that's where the responses will help us, but I think it would be helpful to understand how we get from the point of all that information to turning around a more detailed RFP and what that is going to be like, not specifically, but conceptually what it's going to be like, because then people might understand, including myself, a little bit more about what that would be, as well as, I think there are questions. So then after that, at that point, there is time where people are going to prepare their proposals and come back to us, and then, and I think when those come back, where there is less confidentiality to them, where more can be shared with the public about them, that that will be the real time and opportunity for the community to say, boy, we told you, we thought we wanted this, and now we have these proposals, and which ones best match up with what we told you. So I just feel like, you know, I'm going to vote for this, and I think this is the right move and the right time in the process, but I do feel like times are going by, and it would be helpful for staff to start to give the community a little bit more, you know, understanding of what is beyond October 31st and how that process kind of goes, not down to dates and meetings, but just kind of like, here are the things that need to be done in that order, at some time that's relatively soon, so people understand that that's understood and can be discussed.
Yeah, and I think as part of that, you know, standing up the team will be the first step in getting there. Mr. Sharp, do you have any additional thoughts or comments?
Well, I will say, there's certainly opportunity to get into more of the detail of this once the proposals are in and once the team qualifies those who are appropriate bidders, those who are at least in the ballpark of what may be perceived to be acceptable. But there is, there is at that point a relatively short time between the time when that small review team will give us that short list, and then the point at which we must send some of the people on that short list, perhaps not all of them, but some of them, off to do a detailed proposal. I'm anticipating that that will be too short a time to really provide for them appropriate guidance on what the detailed proposal is supposed to look like. And I think we need to begin sooner to get at what it is the community finds acceptable and what it is they, from a financial standpoint certainly, but also from a density standpoint from, and I think, to some extent, we've, you know, we had the discussion last week about, at least I tried to approach it, have we created too rigid a proposal here that will not permit us, permit the proposers to come up with the kind of flexibility in the building design that, Mr. Chairman, you put forward would be desirable? I'd still like very much to have a clarification that, yes, they will have that opportunity. And so...
I did check with Dr. Jones on that, and I'm sorry to interrupt, so when, I think she could address that issue. So are we in any, in terms of the specifications for the educational facilities, is there anything, we talked about this, for example, in the context of the Discovery School, and is, are there regulations or requirements that basically foreclose various creative options or that, you know, say, certain things must be or certain things must not, or do we have flexibility?
No.
Or do the bidders better have flexibility?
Yeah, the Virginia guidelines are just guidelines for us, as far as school design and recommended square footage and infalls church, we, not that we don't follow the guidelines, but we tend to ask for a product that is better, and we've always done that with our schools than Virginia guidelines. And I really do feel like even in the conceptual, it will be interesting to see when the proposals come in. I think we have clearly articulated that we're looking for a 21st century high school, you know, that allows collaboration and flexibility, and I think we'll be able to further refine that, and I think the School Board has that vision for the future, just in some of the schools that you've looked at and as, you know, we look at pictures and think about what it could be. And I feel like the, even on the conceptual, that we've done that, and we clearly communicated that also at the meeting that we had on the RFP that was held at George Mason, and just what we were looking for in a high school, not looking for boxes for classroom spaces. And that's the easiest way, I think, to describe it. And truthfully, at Mason right now, I mean, you just, you really feel it happening that we're, and I think it's easier for us to communicate it because we're already doing it. We have not waited to have a 21st century building, to have 21st century teaching and learning. And I was just mentioning to Dorian before the meeting tonight, how changing that Maker Studio and kind of redefining that space is starting to change how students use the space. And like during Mustang Block now, I know when my son graduated from Mason, there really weren't that many kids. He could sit in the same chair every day and didn't have to worry that he wasn't going to be able to get that chair at Mustang Block, and now they're out of seats because it is a flexible space during Mustang Block, there are students that are working, you can see it happening right now inside the old building. So I think we're preparing ourselves for that. We have 200 students in hybrid right now. That's phenomenal, and that doesn't count, you know, another 60 that are doing dual enrollment. All of that is part of 21st century teaching and learning. So I think it's easier for us to think that way because we're doing it.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. All right, might we have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the School Board approve the GM MEH proposal review team comprised of Superintendent Dr. Jones and George Mason High School Principal Ty Byrd.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Mr. Lawrence, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? All right, Dr. Jones, I would say that standing the team up is the first step towards having a process that will elaborate and, you know, set out what the work of this group is going to be and how it's going to do it and what those processes will entail, so we look forward to hearing more about that. Now we come to, we have a little bit of an agenda issue here, we don't have...
No comments tonight?
We have no superintendent report or board comments, so would we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be amended to add superintendent's report, item 9.01, board and student liaison comments 9.02, and that adjournment be renumbered 10.01.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Oh, do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we move on to item 9.01, superintendent report. Dr. Jones.
Tonight, just said, school is going well, of course, still, you know, clipping along, and it's so fascinating to watch how many students leave or moving right now, and school just started, and how many students are moving in. It's just the inflow and the outflow is fascinating to watch. I will say, today I had the opportunity to attend the Governor's Roundtable in Manassas, and really great news, I think, on that front, as far as we hope, where we're moving with budget in Virginia. He is stating that this will be a budget that supports public education, so I'm hoping that that will, in fact, does happen. And it was also nice and noted that Joan Wodyska, who used to be a previous chair of the School Board, is vice chair of the State Board of Education, so she was there today. She said it was difficult for her because they had a parent forum, and the parents were on both sides, and then they had the officials, which she was part of in the front, but she couldn't speak as a parent, so she couldn't comment at all. So it was, but it was a great meeting today. And again, everything's going great at school, and I think what I said before would be, even reporting at Mason about the hybrid learning, we're really watching how those components of our program and dual enrollment, which is something the School Board set out to do. The first dual enrollment class that we put in at Mason in 2012, we, I think we had nine students. So it is something that we're, I think we're going to continue to see growing, and again, those are, we're just expanding what we're offering for any student, what is the right program for you? Is it IB diploma, IB courses, mixed with AP? Is it dual enrollment? Is it hybrid learning? But continuing those options. We did have our parent nights, and I think the staff have done tremendous job. We still have Mount Daniel to go, and those are in the first part of October, and the parent nights, they've, do what? Yeah, oh, they're other grade level, yeah, I was just thinking, I was there last week. TJ, and they've done a great job also of discussing technology at their parent nights. As you know, I think we did a fantastic job at high school last year and had those mandatory sessions for parents, and we realized it was very difficult to get information to parents at elementary and middle about what we were doing last year and what was going on in the classroom. And the principals have done a great job of making sure they're addressing that on that one night they have at elementary and middle when everybody's there and it's parent night. So kudos to them, really trying to communicate well about what's going on in the buildings. So that's all for me.
How about one more thing?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I thought you were going to ask me a question, actually, so. So one of the letters that was on the board agenda tonight had to do with the Apple Watches, and so, you know, I had discussed it with the School Board and kind of what my frame of thinking was as a school superintendent. You know, I looked at the iWatch, and I don't even like that it's called a watch, because I think it's much more than that, but looked at it in May, looked at it again, trying to really understand the product and what it could do for our administrative team in June. All of our administrators were in a training together this summer in August and had an opportunity, again, to see a high-level technician really demonstrate what the product actually does. And we weren't really there to look at an iWatch, it just happened to be part of looking at where is technology going in the future? We were asking questions even about our keyboard's going to be around forever, you know, so when we're thinking about high schools in 10 and 15 years out, what is the product that'll be there? So at that point, you know, we realized that it could be a great administrative tool for us. However, we, I really wasn't sure that everybody would think that way, and so what I did as a school superintendent is make that available to our administrative instructional team. And when I say instructional team, you're talking about the people that are in the trenches or answering the critical questions on a daily basis. If they, if that principal needs to reach higher to senior leadership, who do they call? And we made it available as a tool or a resource if they were interested, so we didn't purchase them and just push them out. And we have found that it is an incredibly valuable resource for us, that we're able to have notifications. We're not missing, I think, some of the notifications we did in the past. And I want, I don't know that guys and gals are even different, but I know for me, a lot of times, my phone is in my purse or it's on my desk because I don't wear it on me. I don't, I don't wear pants to wear it in my pocket like that. I guess I could. But it's made such a difference for me, because I can be down the hall, you know, consulting Tom for legal or be in Lisa's office and having what we thought was going to be a five-minute conversation, not have my phone with me, and I'm not missing things. And I think we're all finding that as administrators. And I think the thing that I didn't do well was communicate as well, kind of what we were doing, perhaps. That's one of the reasons we put it in morning announcements, was to be transparent about it, but... it. But we did get one or two questions from it. So I think it's just sharing, you know, that's where we are with it. And we're excited about it as a resource and a tool, and think it has value. We're not really sure what the range is in each building. We're figuring that out. You can move around your building. You can be in other rooms. It will also have our Power School app, which is our student information system. So we can bring up instant, you know, you're trying to find a student in 5th block, where are they? They'll be able to do that as well. So that's where we are on that right now.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Jones. And we'll move to board comment here. And you're first, Mr. Sharpen-Tier. So just get yourself prepared. But before we do that, a bit of discussion about this issue. I think, you know, the first thing with respect to technology, I remember my first daughter was in private school when our son began. And when he went into Waterford at Mount Daniel, a computer-based learning, reading tool, I thought was heresy. And I saw that he learned to read a lot faster than my eldest daughter. So technology works in ways that we don't always understand. And I think we have to have some level of trust in the people whose job it is to teach our kids. And that's not this board. And that touches on another issue about governance. Again, this is an issue where this board exists to supervise the work of the superintendent, who in turn is charged with the education of the children in this division. And I was thinking about this in the context today of the Apple Watch. And I was reading about Apple, Amazon taking $170 million write-down on their phone offering. And it led me to think also, there's a lot of discussion in this world about failure and how we can learn from failure. I don't view this as a failure. I view this as an attempt to try to use technology in a way that may ultimately be extraordinarily valuable. We won't know. And the board has asked the superintendent to provide updates periodically. I think monthly would be good, about what the use cases are for this and how it's working out. I want our superintendent to take chances, and I want her to try to use the available technology. And whatever technology that may be, it may be a blackboard, it may be, it may be an Apple Watch, who knows? But I don't want conservatism to stifle innovation, because I think technology, when appropriately used, can help provide a level of personalized learning that I think is the goal ultimately of this system, to allow every child to meet their potential. You know, having said that, I think we look forward to hearing about this. And if your worst failure this year is that these Apple Watches haven't performed as anticipated, that's a lot better than losing $170 million for Amazon on a failed phone. And, you know, again, for those who say we should try failure and learn from it, that means taking chances. That means doing things people haven't done before. Playing it safe, I don't think is sound. And so the board looks forward to hearing about this voyage. And we also look forward to hearing about new innovations that you might be considering and working with you to make sure that those are rolled out, you know, in a way that works well for everyone. So with that, I will pass it over to board and student comment with you, Mr. Sharpen-Tier.
Okay, so one thing I'd like to update you on is the student representatives to the advisory committees. The applications for the students will be due next Friday. Some have already submitted applications, and they will be reviewed by myself and the SC teacher, who is an SCA sponsor. And I am coordinating this with Mr. Lawrence here. And then these will be, these students will be recommended to Dr. Jones. So that is the main thing that's going on. And I'd also like to thank you for approving my model UN trip. I'm looking forward to it.
You're welcome. All right, shall we start with Ms. Ward on the left here?
Sure. I just wanted to add to your comments, Mr. Castillo, about the watches. I think in the modern schools, and I see this every day, more and more is being asked of teachers and administrators, they're worn thin, and any kind of technology that could possibly help school personnel do a better job is a good thing. And we've got to try, we've got to see what's out there. We've got to try and keep abreast of the new developments as best as we can. And I think that was a good call on your part, Dr. Jones. I also wanted to bring up, this never works for me, the, a couple of things with athletic boosters. I'm going to put a plug in here, if I can find it. The athletic boosters are auctioning off football tickets and, for a fundraiser. And if you give me a chance, I will find it. Yes, Redskins. I'm sorry, I can't find it. I know it's in there somewhere. Let me just try something real quick. Here we go. Okay, the game is Sunday, October 25th at 1:00 PM. It's Redskins playing Tampa Bay Buccaneers. The tickets are priced at $264.30, but will be sold to the highest bidder. So if you're big Redskins or a Buccaneers fan, you might be interested in these. They're located in the lower level, row one, seats 12 and 13, about the 20-25 yard line. So they're good tickets, and it's for good cause, the athletic boosters. So if you are interested, you can contact Kate Nesson or me through the school board, and I'll arrange to get you those tickets. The other thing I wanted to bring up, that actually this originated from a parent on the athletic boosters, a concern about our school profile. As you know, as Mr. Sharpen-Tier can agree with, seniors are scrambling to apply for colleges right about now. And that process has started, and there has been parental concern about updating the school profile and streamlining it to what college admission counselors look for. I don't know if that's something that, I'm not sure who would handle this, that's something that our communications people?
Yeah, I think Dr. Jones can, I've been in the loop on this.
Okay, yes, if one of you could just speak to...
So no, Dr. Jones, you can speak to that.
To swage the parents' concerns. Thank you.
Right. The high school has looked at the high school profile at the request of two different parents, only two. They haven't had a larger request, but they've done their due diligence to really look at the profile, make sure it's the best that it can be. What I will say is, it's always difficult to have one document that every parent is going to like. They have been very thoughtful. They've listened to the parent. Mr. Byrd has sent our profile to schools. They said it was an East Coast issue mainly, and actually, Mr. Webb also assisted us in this process. We've sent it to schools up and down the East Coast to actually provide feedback on what they thought about the profile, what we should change. I was in a meeting, I want to say maybe yesterday, anyway, it was very recent, just having that one last final meeting. There are some things that the high school was asked to do that they do not feel comfortable with changing. One of those would be that looking at the GPA of the senior class and having that moving throughout the school year. We all feel like that, for us, as a school division, that's not something anybody does. You go into the year, and what's in the profile is what you have for that senior class. What we don't want to have is a student who applies for an application in October, and then somebody else is applying in January, and they have two different profiles, because you're updating and changing things along the way. So the way the profile is going into the year is the way that, once we get the data, you have to have your ACT scores, you have to have your SAT scores. Once all that official data is in there, it doesn't change. So that part is probably the piece that I would say, we're not going to be able to meet them where they are for our comfort. We just feel like it would be a lack of integrity on how the universities would look at us. But we've worked very hard to listen to their concerns. Amy Krajnowich has really done a lot of work on it. Our IB coordinator has been involved and at the table as well, as well as our resource teacher, Allison Johnson, at the high schools, from all frames of reference. And we feel good about where it is.
Thank you for responding to that. Appreciate it.
Ms. Rankuma.
Okay, no, nothing, as the season ramps up on peak, on GT and PTSE. However, on the chamber, just want to let this notify folks about two upcoming events. The Network Mix on the Creative Cauldron tomorrow, and all folks are invited. It'll be down on the building. No, 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 on Maple Avenue, Creative Cauldron.
Oh, Creative Cauldrons, yes.
Right.
Pearson Square.
Pearson Square, that's what I was looking for. Thank you. And then the other, on the 29th of September, is the Annual Mini Golf Family Fun Night, which is held by, I think it's held at the Upton Hill Regional Park, just along Wilson off of 29. At Eden Center, just south of, is it east of, east or south of the Eden Center? So just wanted to point that out. Heading towards Arlington on 29. Yeah. That was it.
Mr. Lawrence.
I'll start with Dorian. We had a talk about, well, a bunch of things outside Starbucks a couple of weeks ago. The student reps he's talking about were ones that were unfilled as of last year. And one thing he's going to do is make sure that going into every new year, he's got a process in place for student representatives for the school board liaison, so that at the end of the school year, people are appointed for when they come in in September, and it's not the new person scrambling to try to get people appointed in September like he's doing now. Went to the Education Foundation Board meeting. Most of this discussion was run for the schools, which I missed because I slept in like three hours later than normal. I was actually very happy about that. But the foundation decided they're changing their fiscal year to match the school's fiscal year, which, you know, they ran into a bunch of problems with things overlapping, and they're going to fix that. We had a very good session at Central Office, I think it was last week, with advisory committee chairs and vice chairs training, mostly done by our counsel, Tom Horn. And what was really instructive was the questions, because there were, there was a lot of genuine questions about what they were doing and how they were doing it, and was it right? And I think what was the best thing that came out of it was they felt that they had people they can talk to, mostly Tom, when they do have questions about what is a meeting, how do you notice a meeting, what is a subcommittee, when do you need to do X, Y, or Z? So it was, it was very, very positive. Other than that, I went to the MEH Back to School, and I've got to say, the teachers almost always made their time this year, which was, it's always tough, but it seems like some years they only get through half of their talks, and then we have to move on. But it went, it went very, very well. So, thank you.
Ms. Carney.
Thank you very much, sir. Just a couple of things from me this evening. First, Chairman Castillo, I thank you for your comments about the Apple Watch thing that we find ourselves in the middle of, and I support them. But I do also say that the fact that some people are concerned about an expenditure of that size and the community signals that we probably have an improvement to do in communication and engagement, I'm pleased that we've added that to our priorities in the school board this year. And I would say that we ignored our own risk, not being serious about taking a look at that topic. But I wholeheartedly support your comments, and thank you for them. I would also say that I'm not going to admit, like John, that I overslept and missed the school thing. I'm going to move right along to Parks and Rec, where we met last week for the first meeting of this new year. And I just have a couple of things to share with you. One, Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park, you may not know where that is, but if you walk down Broad Street by Panera, you will find it, is a really nice little park in the town. Most people don't know about it. We've just recently completed some renovation work there. I was walking over there on Sunday, in fact, before I had a little call with Justin. It's a nice little park, it's a good little walk. But at our meeting on the 9th, we had a public hearing for folks in the community to talk about the master plan for the next stages for that park. And so if you are interested in that, I would encourage you to send your comments. You can get in touch with Danny Schlitt, and he'll give you feedback on what's been done, what we're thinking about doing, and take your comments on that. Also, West End Park is complete, except for signage. And if you keep watching your calendar in our October timeframe, there should be a grand opening event of some sort, since you can go and take a look at the beautiful new park at West End. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Webb.
The daycare advisory board met. I was unable to make it yesterday because of traffic getting through DC, which everyone's probably going to encounter over the next few days because of a certain visitor in town. But from the minutes of that meeting, the director reported that enrollment is slightly down a little bit this year from this time last year. Also reported, which we also discussed, about the hiring of a new, of a new office assistant. And some, for the next meeting, there will be some discussion of bylaws, and that we, they elected a chair who was a continuation of a chair for the upcoming year for the advisory group. And then my comments in relations to the iWatch. For me, I guess I take a slightly different position, that I am not supportive of that purchase. It's not necessarily the amount that it was, but it is the, some of the rationale that was, were given for that purchase of the iWatches. I am as supportive of anyone of bringing technology into the classroom and enhancing the learning experience for our students. But with this particular purchase, I do not necessarily see the functionality of the purchase. It was, I don't think it was necessary purchase. But they are here now. They, but they're here. Looking forward to the, to the updates of how they are being implemented and used. But I think that, that $5,000, granted, it is not a large sum of money, but I think that could have been used for other purchases within that same realm, technology realm, and not necessarily with the purchase of iWatches for the administrators. But we, again, what's done is done, is a learning experience, because of some of the feedback that we've gotten from the community. And again, learning experience for the communications part of it, to be able to communicate and put this information out with our constituents in a much better and more effective way for these type purchases, because we have had continual communications with folks who ask questions about our technology purchases. And I think this falls into the realm of one that gives me pause of the purchase. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Webb. Mr. Sharp.
Yeah, I think, as, I try to continue a little bit on that same topic, so it doesn't get, doesn't get lost here. I'll just say, I was pleased to hear more of an explanation of the process that Dr. Jones went through in, in making the purchase, that she was initially not really enamored of the, of the device itself, had to be shown different ways that it could work, and different functions that it could help with. And even once she became convinced that it could help her in her own duties, she then offered it to staff, people, and was not requiring them to take it, but was only making a distribution of the devices to those who also felt that it would add to the, to the value of what they brought to the, to their administrative duties. And so, that process, to me, was a much, much better process than I initially understood. As far as, as being able to get at this as a more thorough budgeting process, I'll just blame myself there. This, if there are these things that, that could be... Um, this, if, if there are these things that, that could be, uh, the subject of, um, public scrutiny that, uh, uh, put potentially not so favorable light on, on a purchase, uh, those are things that, uh, in my way of thinking, I should have been very careful to make sure that, that that, uh, was able to be anticipated within the budget process that we went through in the spring. And if I didn't bring it out at that point, shame on me. Uh, so, uh, those, those are things that, uh, you know, I don't think we can go to a zero base budgeting system, but we ought to be as detailed, uh, as we need to be to make sure that our public will support, uh, those expenditures, purchases that we, that we come up with. Uh, and if we don't, uh, it's, it's, it's our fault. And then in this case, uh, to the extent there's, uh, appropriate public concern about it, it's, I'll, I'll take the blame for it. I did also get some contact, uh, in recent days from, uh, a person who's nineteen-sixties alum of George Mason High School and, uh, is interested in developing, uh, better system for, uh, having the alumni come in, uh, on their reunion, uh, weekends and be able to tour the, uh, the school and learn what the prospects are for coming up with a new school and other things about what's happening in, in, uh, in their alma mater. And I look forward to helping with, uh, getting that tour that he requested it off on October the third, so anyone who's, uh, an alum who's interested in that kind of tour, uh, that there is being, there is one being organized for the morning of October third, uh, you can get to me if you, if you want to there. There are others, uh, that I know are going to be in the area, uh, later this month and I think, uh, there will be some additional tours requested and I'll do what I can to facilitate there. And I want to thank Dr. Jones for responding very quickly, uh, to the, uh, requests that I had made and, and assured, uh, that, uh, there would be people who would be onsite and knowledgeable and available to help conduct these tours, uh, and that they would be, make every attempt to make them convenient for the alums. I also had contact from a former board chair, uh, named Patrick Rickards, and, uh, he is currently a director of the Woodrow Wilson Fellowship Foundation, uh, which is associated with, I believe, Princeton University. In any case, uh, uh, he directs a fellowship program that, uh, will provide several million dollars per year to state colleges and already five states are participating in this. It's teaching fellowships in math and science and Dr. Jones, again, was very cooperative in, uh, helping to deliver a letter of support for, uh, bringing this kind of teaching fellowship to Virginia colleges, uh, through Patrick's foundation. And, uh, she delivered that letter to, uh, one of the governor's aides this morning in, in, uh, the meeting that, uh, she talked about earlier that was held in Manassas. So, uh, I'm hopeful that, uh, we may see some, some good results there. Uh, I would like to, uh, I don't need the answers tonight, but I would like to understand, uh, for sometime in the near future, uh, when we may receive a report, uh, about the pride survey that was done in the spring and apparently was still being, uh, assessed up, up until a few weeks ago. Uh, that's a survey of, uh, student behavior, um, drugs and alcohol and that kind of thing. But, uh, uh, also, I think it, it also looks into the support systems that students have of one kind or another. So we, we have an idea of what services are, are being accessed and, and what may be needed. Uh, also the health committee that we adopted under five point one-two, I'd like to understand how that committee, uh, is going to be constituted and, and, uh, look forward to, to bringing that about. I did meet with the BIE council, uh, Mary Beth Connolly is the staff representative to there. She's always really on, on top of things and getting, uh, just more and more and more and more contacts with business partners in the community. She did a, again, an outstanding job of getting those, uh, people to support, uh, the people, the, the, uh, new staff members who are coming into our schools, making them feel welcome and, and giving them supplies and free lunches and, and just the, the warmth of, uh, a, a very strong community that supports its schools. Eric Pelton is the new chair of that council, uh, taking the baton from Tori McKinney who did a, an outstanding job, uh, leading that group over the past couple of years. The run for the schools was great fun and I want to thank Debbie Hiscott and all those, uh, with the foundation who helped to put that together. Uh, the cross-country team who helped to monitor the different, uh, spaces where people had to make their turns and, uh, keep, keep the, uh, local traffic from creeping in. And of course, our police department who also assisted with, uh, uh, great help there. Uh, finally, uh, this coming Thursday, the Fairfax Partnership for Youth will hold a mentor training, uh, opportunity at the Panino Building, that's one of the government center buildings in Fairfax, seven to nine PM, and that's Thursday night. The mentors will primarily be recruited to serve the Homestretch Program, that's a, a program that serves homeless families in our area, but they'll also be eligible to serve as youth mentors in other youth service programs in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Uh, at the risk of piling on, the race for the schools was, uh, something that I continue to think about every day of this week because I don't run. I stopped running, I ran and, and I, uh, you, you don't happen to know that Park Avenue heading up from the bike path towards the library is called Heartbreak Hill, but, but it is, because I got a cramp that I'm still living with. But anyway, uh, thanks to everybody involved, also Troop Eight-Ninety-Five for providing, uh, refreshments, but not any pain relievers. Um, and Debbie Hiscott, Cecily Shea, uh, Coach Braven was out there running much faster than everybody else. I have to say, Kiran was looking excellent. Um, he, he, when I'm fifty-five the way he is now, I hope to look that good. Um, you know, I, I was reading a biography recent, well, it was a history of World War II and, uh, FTR and, uh, his leaders, including George Marshall. And one of the things FDR told George Marshall at one point was, you know, "I may tell you what to do and I may tell you when to do it, but I won't tell you how to do it." And, you know, with respect to the Apple Watch, uh, just a coda here, uh, again, we, as a governing body, um, charge the superintendent with doing her job of educating the kids, keeping them safe. Um, she made this decision and we will see how it plays out in, in practice, but, but I think we need to bear in mind the role of the school board is not to sit over people's shoulders and say, "I think, uh, you know, you really should get a two gigabyte, um, Mac Air instead of the one." You know, we have to let people do their jobs and we have to trust people that they will do their jobs well. And when they need some assistance with that, when there are issues, we will certainly raise that, but, but we are not in the business of hovering over the people who educate our kids. Um, and do we want people in this school division to, um, be so conservative, as I mentioned before, that, that really nothing gets done and nothing gets innovated? And I would say no. Um, last night was at George Mason for, uh, kind of what's going to happen to your senior kid for the next few months and that was very well attended. Uh, it's going to be on, uh, TV recorded, so anybody with seniors who wants to know what the future has in store, I would advise you to take a look at that. Um, I, I came across a statistic that I can't help but, uh, publicizing. Um, the graduation rate nationally for high school is eighty-one percent. Um, for Harvard, it's ninety-eight percent and for George Mason, last year it was a hundred percent. So I, I thought that was a, a useful data point. Yale was somewhat below Harvard unfortunately, like ninety-six point eight percent. Um, let's see, what else? Yeah, exactly. It's his fault. Um, and, and I think that pretty much sums it up. So we, Ms., oh, oh, wait, oh, I'm sorry, before I forget, um, I, I did want to note that Mr. Horn is meeting with all the alumni from George Mason on Friday at five-thirtieth, fiftieth anniversary class and he's buying the drinks. No. Okay, uh, Mr. Webb.
Just real quick, back to what Margaret was discussing earlier about the, uh, the transcripts and what you put in the, uh, the profile. At some point last year, that I met with, uh, with Ms. Kajanowicz, uh, Mr. Byrd and Ms. Jones, Dr. Jones, about that and just giving my more so professional, um, experience of that, uh, and generally what the discussion of what should be in there, I gave the opinion of, I think, the overall profile was pretty good of what they have in there. And the discussion about what she was just talking about of taking out, I would not be, as a, an admissions professional, I would not be supportive of changing the profile from one semester to the next because a group of students' grades have increased because that gives a, a kind of a different perspective of that everyone, at least at the beginning of that semester, that year, starts off on an equal footing and if their GPA goes up, it goes up, if it stays the same, it stays the same, but it does not give, it gives, I think, a, a level playing field for all the students who are applying to colleges and universities. So, um, I think it's always good to, to look at and review those things, but I think, um, which they've done, and I think they've done a, a good job of reaching out to multiple sources, um, for feedback about the profile.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. That's a useful perspective from somebody who is in the admissions business, so thank you. Uh, well, we could Terry or we could adjourn, what do you say? Let's adjourn.
Adjourn.
Thanks.